Hi, good evening, everybody. This meeting to order of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. It's Tuesday, April 22, 2014. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 8, 2014 regular meeting.
So who?
By Mark. Second by Lisa. Any amendments? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. We now have a moment of public comment. Any members of the public like to speak? No? Then we'll move on to reports and discussion. And our first item are principals' reports. Thank you for being here, gentlemen.
Welcome back.
You too.
Something didn't probably have off. Forget it. So, a few things happening at Chancellor. I just want to report back. I mentioned that we did that Spirit Day was coming up shortly after I did my last report. Hat Day was February 28. It's a rough estimate, but about, probably close to 75% of the kids participated. Almost every staff member did to some capacity. Some bring multiple hats and changing. I even had, someone brought me a King's Crown that I wore during dismissal. And the bus driver was wondering why. It was a good day. It was the first time we got to do it. We're going to do it, like I mentioned, a red, white, and blue day in May. And we'll plan these as we go on. The first one was a great success, a lot of fun. People had a good time with it. I thought it was a great day. Just a quick common language for all. We're currently discussing perseverance, starting this week. Good timing with, obviously, things like the state assessments coming through the district, as well as the last couple of months of school. So kind of persevering through and finishing on a good note. It won't be the last theme, but that's currently what we're working on. Just another, I had mentioned the principal for the day, the possibility of the cutout in the lobby to gain some momentum. It is in the lobby of Chancellor. You could probably see it as you drive by on Nobwood. Students have been taking pictures with it and saying hello, "Good morning, Mr. King." I hear it. So I hear it all the time. So just to kind of build some momentum on that, I think that was a really good strategy last year to get a lot more kids involved. So hopefully, we get the same turnout. Just a quick, April 1st to the 3rd, as I mentioned, was the Grade 3-5 New York State ELA assessment. Our spring concerts, students in all 6 grades working extra hard in their performances. We'll have some performances for parents throughout mid to late May, as well as opportunities for the fellow students to see some concerts that we strategically put in place during the day so they can all try to attend. And that's, excuse me, all leading up to Special Friends Day on Friday, May 23. You may have seen in one of the recent newsletters, something I just wanted to bring point. As you know, in the past, a lot of times, we've worked with the Environmental Education Department of Putnam, Northern Westchester, to bring enriching specialty science programs to the building. And we were able to arrange for Lisa DiMargio from Impact Education, which is another group that we partnered with through the Voces, to bring the inflatable planetarium back to Chancellor. We did that for a few years. And I don't think we were able to do it last year. We were able to bring it back during the month of April. And students have the opportunity to travel through the seasons following the sun, learning about earth relationships, climate causes of change, stars, constellations, and storytelling, combined to create a very enlightening experience for the students. All students were able to get through. It was the first time I got in there. It really is literally this inflatable planetarium. It's pretty cool. You forget you're in this little thing jammed into the community room. And we're able to get full classes in there and everything. So I just wanted to thank Dorni Schroeder from the director of Public of Northern Westchester Voces, the Environmental Education Department, who helps set that up with us. Some upcoming events moving forward. April 29, we have Staff Appreciation Day sponsored by the PTSO. We do have the New York State Math Assessments coming up next week. Case screening begins May 14. Your field record, four sets of twins that are going to be in our class in September. About 64 students officially registered as of today. And I'm sure some more to come. Special Friends Day, as I mentioned earlier, is going to be Friday, May 23, changed from the Thursday, since we're going to have school that day, but it's still going to be a full day for students. So, short month with the vacation. That's about what's happening.
Any questions? Diane and I.
I just wondered if you had any feedback on the state tests that were missed?
Yeah. Well, you know, the one thing I kind of knew last time was the idea that they were making it slightly longer, but had kind of changed the timing, which I thought was a step in the right direction. Some of the patterns we noticed, the level of stories, things, passages that students had to read, there wasn't as much variety as there has been in the past. There were quite a few, a little less in 3rd grade, but 4th and 5th, quite a few much higher level reading passages. In fact, we did a few kind of quick, there's ways to kind of find out, like Fonseca know level and things. And some of the 5th grade texts were definitely middle school level, if not higher. One of the things we noticed about questions, by the way, was a lot less variety of question, by the way. They used to, it seemed like they had, you know, in the past, they were testing a lot more of those specific skills, characterization, plot, things like that. This time, it was much more about the close reading strategies that we are teaching, we have been really teaching students to do over the last couple of years, which takes time. So we still did wind up seeing a handful of kids, nowhere's near as many as last year, as far as that percentage. If you remember, China and I really had similar data as far as, you know, we had up to 20 kids in some grades that didn't get to finish the test for a lot of different reasons, especially Day 2. I do know there were field test questions, not an idea really where they were embedded, but they kept with the three votes instead of four, which was also, I think, a step in the right direction, possibly, hearing some feedback from last year. But the biggest thing was, I think, and I can only speak to 3 through 5, was the less, much less variety of questions, actually, almost repetitive-type questions across the board, especially Day 1, where you have just passage, addressed questions, passage. Not a monster change in the maybe the way from last year, in the way they asked some of the extended responses and things. Those were pretty similar. But I think overall, they did give a better timeframe to take the test, for students to sit and take it. We keep that owing students, by the way, they get time and a half for the test. Most students didn't necessarily need it, is the worst thing in the world. But I think the variety of question, like I've mentioned, was the biggest change from last year to this year.
Laura, did you?
It's the same question.
Did you receive any feedback from the children themselves or their parents?
Not so much. More teachers, to be honest, not as many as last year. No students gave me, I mean, I had a couple that were like, "Oh, that story was, you know, dumb," or something like that. But no real feedback. You know, I did hear more from the students last year, not, not even then, but more from teachers who had similar kind of notices. I'm interested in the math. The math is something, you know, I saw some, like I mentioned, so I have a little, some improvements in ELA, but I'm curious to see where they're going to go with some of the math assessments. But like I mentioned, just quickly going back to ELA, that depth of diving into a passage and really making a lot of inferences from what you read at the beginning to the end, and making connections from paragraph to paragraph was something that was consistent with last year.
And we had, Joe, you had previously reported that we did have a number of students opt out, right?
They refused.
Yeah. My building, five altogether.
Okay.
Some in 3rd, one in 4th.
All right. Any other questions for Brett? Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Obviously, Mr. Kevins cannot be here tonight. He asked me to express his apologies for being absent, and also to deliver his report. As Brett mentioned, the math state assessments will be missed next week, and Mr. Kevins will provide anecdotal information about both the ELA and math testing in his May auditorium. As the BMS 8th grade students finish their study of World War II, students will next view a documentary film about nuclear testing formed around Bikini Hay Pool during Operation Crossroads in 1946. This is an Academy Award nominated film entitled "Radio Bikini," and was directed by Robert Stone, who was the parent of one of our 8th grade students. Mr. Stone will be available to speak with classes about the making of this film. On May 2nd, BMS welcomes Dr. Patricia Wright, along with several of her graduate students and colleagues, as well as Broadway actors with the group Zara, eyeing up to speak to our 6th and 7th grade students about their work in Madagascar. The timing has yet to be finalized. The program will run from approximately 12:45 to dismissal. And the BMS students will attend two presentations, one in the auditorium and one in the BMS gymnasium. Mr. Kevins would like to invite you to join if you're available, and he'll provide more information as the plans will finalize. Mr. Kevins also notes, if you may recall, that a private viewing of the movie Island of Lemurs: Madagascar was also in the works. Dr. Wright has informed him that Warner Brothers will not have a 2D version of this movie until late August, so he's looking into next fall for screening that film. A related note to Madagascar, BMS has been contacted by a curriculum design specialist working at the university in Toliara, Madagascar, who's interested in the work, the partnership between BMS and Dr. Wright, who's looking to build similar connections between middle and high schools in his region and in New York State. Several unique opportunities have already been discussed, and Mr. Kevins and the BMS faculty look forward to the potential benefits of collaborating and sharing resources. At all 3 grade levels of BMS, teachers have been collaborating, culminating their collaboration with our library media specialist, Ms. Lynn Brooker, throughout the year to develop library research skills with a focus on supporting the shifts in the common core. Students at each grade are about to begin or have recently completed several of these projects. An 8th grade student has recently completed a research project on World War II. 7th grade students have completed a study on labor laws and working conditions in the early 1900s, and are beginning a project on the Civil War. And 6th grade students are about to begin their Top 100 project, studying the most influential people in history. Looking ahead, on Thursday, May 8, BMS Spring Concert Season will open for the Spring Band Concert at 7:00. And finally, on Wednesday, May 28, 7th and 8th grade band members will travel to Manhattan to view a performance of the Woody Allen musical Bullets over Broadway. Ms. Lurk is also looking at the possibility of her students performing in small ensemble groups in Bryant Park. So that's a, that's a, from BMS. Moving to the high school, a moment I'd like to congratulate the task crew advisors of Young Frankenstein. Last week, two of our career technical institute students attended the Skills USA competition in Syracuse. The Skills USA Championship, the competition, is the showcase for the best career and technical students in the state and in the nation. These students compete against other CTR technical students from around the state in their areas of technical expertise, and their projects are adjudicated by a panel of professionals. One of our students specializes in culinary arts, and the other in law enforcement and security. Four of our seniors were recognized for their academic excellence by New York State, and they will receive scholarships from the State Education Department, assuming that the budget passes for the state. That's a relatively rare notice for our students to receive this kind of recognition from SCP. The National Arts Society sponsored a blood drive on Wednesday, April 9. It was very well attended. The Gay Straight Alliance sponsored the Day of Silence on Friday, April 11, to bring attention to bullying and harassment and to help promote a safer school environment. 65 students signed up ahead of time to participate, and they were joined by a number of other students who were recognized that day as well. In a few weeks, we will begin administration of advanced placement exams. We'll be administering approximately 180 exams. Due to the hard work of teachers, students, and support of the community, the high school has once again been named to the Washington Post's list of America's most challenging high schools for 2013. And this list is composed of about the top 5% of 27,000 high schools in the country. I want to emphasize that this recognition is based on the strength of our K-12 program, which really, that strength culminates in a high school exit exam, so to speak. The guidance office and the main office, my office, have begun our scheduling process for the 2013, excuse me, 2014 and '15 school year. For the third year, we will use a process we were trained on to write the master schedule in order to minimize the number of schedule conflicts. Looking ahead, the Senior Citizen Prom sponsored by the RTA and the National Arts Society takes place this Saturday. As usual, our students volunteer, wait on tables, help set up and take down the event, and they earn community service for this participation. The SAT will be administered on May 3. Our high school band concert takes place on May 7. Our junior senior prom will take place on May 23, and the high school choral concert takes place on May 23.
Very good. Any questions? Well, that's terrific, and I know that, you know, the Washington Post recognition, while I'm not always, you know, a big fan of these kind of lists, it's sort of nicer, nice to be on the list, if there's going to be one, so, at least that list. And I think you're right, that it reflects, it's a reflection of our K-12 program collectively. So that was nice news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, then. We'll move on to our board committee reports that are in your packet, and I believe, what do we have here? Communication is the first one. Deirdre, I think you have those in it?
No, those are mine.
Yours. Oh, okay.
I will try to keep it brief, though the minutes are not. We have a lot of things to cover. First, about creating profiles for the Board of Education candidates. And we will put information in the newsletter, the annual budget newsletter, which will be received around May 13, including biographical information and the four key questions that we felt that our community would be interested in knowing about our candidates. The budget newsletter is going to come out after the deadline for submitting absentee ballots, but we're going to post information on the website.
Already on it.
Great, thank you. We're also going to include information about the fact that our community members will be receiving a rebate check from New York State based on our ability to keep under the tax cap this year. Steve Jensen reported that he's reached out or gotten in contact with 13 of the 20 families who've left the district for a variety of reasons. And there are a number of key elements, no patterns as of yet, but each family was very grateful for our reaching out to them and getting their feedback. We will continue these initial interviews. He's going to try to track down the last seven families, and we'll continue to do these annually so that we can try to identify patterns.
If I could just jump in there, for the sake of, especially the folks who are watching this at home, that's 20 over the last five years.
Correct.
So it's, going forward, it'll be a much smaller number for Steve to make those contact calls each year.
Thank you.
Yes, that's right.
One of the parental comments sparked a conversation about drug awareness and substance abuse, substance abuse education in the district. Joe reported that the Wellness Committee has participated in a presentation of Parent University, as well as the BLPT in the middle school. So we are hoping that both the BLPT and Wellness Committee will be able to report to the Communications Committee about their findings for Parent University, which is a national program, dealing with everything from substance abuse to cyberbullying and helping your kid read. Joe also pointed out that he would like to share his concern, that he doesn't want this to be stigmatized as a school issue, more it should be raised as a community issue, and that it would behoove the district to try to reach out to faith-based groups, law enforcement officials, parents, and the town, to see if there are things that we can do to continue to educate our community about substance abuse and drug awareness. The parent survey we've been kicking around has been unanimously agreed to have a third-party facilitator. Deirdre suggested that we narrow the focus to communications and how the district improve communications with our community. We're going to be looking, over the next couple of weeks, for services or universities or other survey companies that can help administer this kind of survey. We also are taking a look at area school websites, and there's a list in your minutes. We encourage all of you to take a look at some of these and give us your feedback about what you like, what you don't like, what works, what doesn't. And we are going to start compiling that sort of information so that we can take a look at improving our school website. The graduation banners are up for final permission from the village, and Central Hudson has approved those, and they should be all set.
Great, okay. Any questions for the Communications Committee? Well, you certainly guys have a lot of items you've been addressing, so thank you. I would just make one comment, and Joe and I did have a brief conversation about this maybe a month or so ago, which is, you know, there's been the issue of substance abuse and people's concern about substance abuse in the community, with all the attention that's been recently given to the problem of heroin use particularly in the Northeast. You know, I think trying to reinvigorate at some point the Rhinebeck Collaboration, which is the meetings that were started years ago, the town supervisors started, but that Joe really led after a time, that is a gathering of the mayor, the town supervisor, and Joe is superintendent of schools to discuss common issues periodically throughout the year, but that has often, sometimes been hard to, Joe being the most stable leader.
And then you could question that, I suppose, in terms of how you want to define that, but.
So that might be, it seems like that's kind of an issue that you guys talked about, but something that maybe we might want to take the lead on, or Joe could bring together, but maybe the BLPT could sort of partner in sort of making some of that happen. For a little while, too, we had Rhinebeck, it was a group that Amma Grab put together.
Yeah, Community Coalition for Rhinebeck Youth.
Right. That helped organize some activities, but I appreciate that that issue has come up and is being discussed in communication, so thank you. We'll move on to the Policy Committee minutes.
I did those. So there were two proposed policies reviewed at the most recent meeting. One concerning staff complaints and grievances. This was something that was called out by our internal audit, and we have a draft that the attorneys for the district provided to us for review. We've asked, we've asked Joe to proceed with his plan to get comments from his administrators, and we'll take that up again at our next meeting. The second one is about charging for, or dealing with meal charges where students have not brought money to pay for meals, and those credits have not been repaid. This is something that we intend to take up, again, after we've gotten some further information from Tom about the magnitude of the issue monetarily speaking. And then we continued on our view of the district's policies. A couple that we just closed the loop on were the Gifts to School Personnel and the Litigation and Procedures Policies, and for the reasons that minutes state, there's no need to make changes to those. And the same is true for all the other policies reviewed. We've reviewed, with the exception of policy number 2350. As to that one, the only change that the committee is recommending is, this pertains to how board meetings are run, and it corresponds very closely to the way that we actually do them, but it does not include a reference to another item, which is standard operating procedure for the board. And so we think it would be worthwhile to change the policy just to reflect that, so that practice and policy are in accord. That's it.
Great. Any questions for policy? Great job, as usual, your committee, a lot going on there as well. So thank you, Lisa. We move on now to the comment section of our agenda. Good news. Does anyone have any good news?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that it was my privilege to attend the luncheon over at SUNY New Paltz right before spring break, to represent our district in being recognized along with two others in a fairly wide catchment area by SUNY New Paltz for our ongoing and longstanding participation in their student teaching and internship programs. So it was, it was honored to be there, especially since there weren't very many districts being honored, so it was, it was pretty special. Other groups and non-education organizations were honored there as well. So I just wanted to report back to you, and not to take anything away from our elementary school or our high school, but our middle school has, for many, many years, participated at a very robust level in not only student teaching, hosting student teachers, but hosting pre-service teachers who come in and spend, you know, a few hours as they're kind of warming up to, you know, to a full-blown student teaching experience. Our, our middle school's been quite active, and actually, at least one, perhaps some others, but you may recall Pat, Patrick Kern, who was a social studies teacher in our middle school, retired a couple of years ago, and Pat has long since been an adjunct at SUNY New Paltz and really helped to solidify that connection. So it was, it was great to get recognized for that.
Very good.
So thank you for letting me go to lunch on SUNY New Paltz's TAD and receive this lovely, this lovely thing suitable for framing, so it was nice to be there, you know.
And presumably, you communicated that to the principals so they could share with our staff?
Well, I haven't yet, but now that we're back, they will, they will have that information.
Great, very good. Any other items for good news? All right, well, the weather's warm, and that's nice. All right, we move on now to old business. Do we have any other items under old business? Did you want to talk about the election?
Yes.
Is that old business? Yeah, okay, so Mary Ann can speak to us, the board clerk, that only one petition was turned in to run for the two seats that will be open, and that was my petition. So Mary Ann, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but my understanding is that then any candidates that want to write, I mean, writing candidates are always a possibility, you know, people can always write in a candidate, but given that there will only be my name on the ballot, should I receive the most votes simply because, or that, you know, you're more likely to get the votes because you're on the ballot? The writing candidate becomes a big, you know, the person, whoever wins gets the most vote of write-in, write-in. So I don't recall in my years running in the past decade that's ever happened. It may have happened previous to that, so.
Happened in the mid-'90s, I believe.
I think it happened once, yeah, before I came on board, but.
Was someone appointed then based on that write-in?
Well, it's winning, it's not really an appointment.
It's not a point.
I mean, win, exactly. So it's assumed the position.
Yes.
Yes.
So I don't know if anyone has any questions about that, but that's just where it stands. So I, you know, we'll see whether members of the community, you know, sort of engage in a writing campaign, or whether it simply will be a quieter affair.
I want to just, I want to express what I'm sure I'm not the only one who feels this way, my disappointment that you were the only person who filed a petition to run, not because you filed it, but, no, but because we have two seats that are available and only one person filed a petition to fill it. I think that it probably. a petition to fill it, I think that it probably would behoove us as a board to think about what we could do about that to reduce the chances of that happening in the future. One thing that I recall happening last year, and I believe the year before, that I don't believe happened this year, was that in the instances where there were incumbents who chose not to run, those incumbents stated publicly that they were not going to do so before the date that the petitions were due, and I think that it's at least fair to assume that people who might consider running for the board when they think there may be a vacant seat might be less inclined to do so, where they think the incumbent would be running to, to maintain that seat. I don't think this is something that is appropriate to be a policy of the board, but I do think that it would be a service to the community by members of the board who have decided that they're not going to continue their service after their terms expire, to make that clear, to state that at a board meeting, and give the additional impetus to somebody who may be wavering. It's certainly better to have that be the case than to have vacancies, and while I hope that there will be a write-in candidate or two, and I'm sure that whoever is elected to that seat will serve with distinction, it is always better to be in a position where you have somebody who files a petition, has the opportunity to give information to the community, so that they know who they're going to be casting a ballot for, and, you know, any efforts that we as a board can make to get that word out are efforts that we should take.
Laura?
I agree with Lisa, and I would like the Communications Committee to take this up, because I think that we have not communicated, A, that there were seats available, B, when the deadlines were, except for the legal notice that we're bound to post. I think it behooves this district, if we take a very proactive role in telling our district, telling our community members that there is an election coming and the benefits of board service and what it means to our kids and our district, and I think in the next meeting, I'd really like to formulate some plan.
And there certainly may be additional avenues to communicate, but I will say, the information has been on the board website for a while about board petitions being available to download and what the dates are, that it was by May 20th, and actually, a whole packet of information that Mary Ann, I appreciate that you put together, actually, it's more comprehensive than other times about exactly the qualifications for people who sign a petition and the other documents, so, there might be, as I said, other avenues, but the website itself has had that for a while. But I think alerting people to available seats is important.
Actually, Bosie's had a fantastic event that both Laura and I attended last year, when, early on in the stages of thinking about candidacy, where members from various school boards were present to answer questions, and certainly, it seems that we could do something similar at an informal level, perhaps through one of our board coffees, you know, or be interested in what it means to be on the Board of Education, come and talk to us, and so, in addition to the kind of formal steps of getting the packet and declaring one's intentions earlier on, making an opportunity to find out what it really entails here in Rhinebeck, I think we should try to do that.
Any other comments about the board election?
Can I just ask a question? What if there is no write-in candidate, can the board function?
Well, then there's a vacant there.
Then the board does what happens when some, if somebody leaves during their term, which is either have a special election, or the board can appoint somebody to fill the seat, as Lisa did, to fill the, the next year of Larry Rich's-
Well, no, I was a little-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Oh, it was Dean Valles, I'm sorry, thank you very much, yeah. So, that can happen if there are no write-ins other than, you know, Mickey Mouse and the usual suspects that we, we do get written in from time to time, and people have, there's a process for contacting those folks and making sure they want to serve, I mean, it's not just like-
Or that they're eligible, they live in the town.
Yeah, so, there's a process to vet that, which, which our attorneys are putting together for us. It's not, it's not typical, but it's not unprecedented, and in fact, there, there's at least one other school district in this county who, who will have a fewer, fewer declared candidates than there are seats, so we're, we're not alone, but that's certainly not to suggest that it's a, it's a good thing.
Laura? Is there a space on the ballot for write-ins?
Yes, there always is. It has to be by law. Whether there are enough, whether there are enough candidates or not, there must be spaces for write-ins, yeah, which is why we always get a few joke write-ins every, well, I assume they're jokes.
Well, that being said, actually, I think we've-
So, I shouldn't say that. I should withdraw that.
Yeah, I mean, there definitely are write, my recollection is write-ins, you know, people living in the community.
Yeah.
It might be two or three, and, you know, it's not clear why someone did that, but, you know, that's, that's, that happens, so.
I was referring to the fictional characters who are occasionally written in.
Right, right. It's, but, you know, I agree that we should consider how perhaps to create a context in the future where this doesn't happen, because yes, you know, we certainly are hopeful that, you know, whoever fills the seat or seats next serves, you know, with seriousness and purpose, but it is certainly better, certain, for example, the Communications Committee decision to ask candidates for information to put in the budget newsletter isn't quite as useful in this situation.
Right.
So, so it is, it is unfortunate, but, you know, again, we'll, we'll work through this and, and see, and see where we are in a few weeks. Are there any other items for other, or, we're on old business.
We're on old business.
Okay, any other old business items, anyone? Public comment, we have an opportunity again for public comment. Any members of the public like to speak? Okay, then we'll move on to other. Any, just one small item I have, is Joe and I have been asked to go to Chamber of Commerce breakfast tomorrow morning to talk a little bit about the district, and we have done that one other time, or two?
I think, I think once, yeah.
So, you know, it's nice, the Chamber of Commerce gave us that opportunity to speak. Terry Gibson is also on the agenda, and, you know, we look forward to it.
What time is that, and where?
7:30 to 9:00 at the Rhine Cliff Hotel.
Any other items for-
Yeah, I have one, I sent out an email earlier, earlier today, just to, to give you a heads up when our, when our Finance Committee meeting wasn't able to, to happen today. Again, just more to give you a heads up and give you an opportunity to ask questions, if you had any, there's no action item, you know, connected with it, but at our last Finance Committee, we had spoken very briefly about, about our interest, Tom's and my interest, in, in changing to a, a much more up-to-date software package for routing our transportation system, the, the package we've been, the software we've been using for what, about seven or eight years, I mean, it's-
Longer than that.
It's, it's old in terms of, you know, software, and, I mean, it, you know, it's, it's adequate, but there, there are products on the market now that do a lot more, they're, they're web-based products, not surprisingly, and there's, as with any software package, there's, there's an upfront cost, but the, the year-to-year cost after the first year is actually less than what we're paying for an old piece of software, and, and our thinking is that there could be some savings to the district over the next few years, not only because the, the ongoing costs are less expensive, but also, we, we think it, it has some very good possibilities of, of helping us reroute some of our bus routes without adding time to the routes, maybe even saving us a route, so there would be a significant savings if we could, you know, reduce our number of routes by one, so, we wanted to let you know that, that we're recommending we do that. Again, it's not an action item, but I didn't want to spend that kind of money without kind of putting it out there, especially since we already mentioned it at the, the last Finance Committee, we're going to talk about it a little more broadly today, but we wanted it not being able to meet, so I wanted to raise it here, and it's something that if we're going to be able to get this online for the coming school year, we have to make a decision literally within the next day or so, because there's setup time, there's training time, everything's got to get loaded in and ready to go over the summer, and you can't wait and do that a week before school starts, so, that's our intent. If, if there are any questions, we're glad to answer them here, if there are any concerns, I prefer to know about them now as opposed to a day or two or a week after we move forward with this, so, sure.
Are you looking for us to do anything, I mean, it sounds like unless you get objections from us, or just that you're going to go handle this?
I'm, I'm giving the board the courtesy of letting you know that we're looking at what's not an insignificant purchase, we like to let the board know anyway. Normally, it would have happened through the mechanism of the Finance Committee and reporting out to the full board, but since we haven't had that vehicle to use in this particular case, I'm, I'm taking a somewhat unusual step in just bringing it to the full board at this point. We think it's a good idea, but if there are concerns or questions, we prefer to hear them and respond to them.
I'm just, I want to understand why there's no action item on this, I'm not saying I think there needs to be, I just want to understand why not.
There would be an action item as a budget transfer, because the account that this would come out of, there is enough money in there currently to cover that cost, so, there will be a budget transfer to bring to the board, to transfer money from an account to this-
So, because it's a replacement essentially, it doesn't require board approval?
No, no, you don't need approval to, to purchase software, but you'll need approval to transfer the money into it to cover the cost of it.
Okay, I understand.
Any other questions about this? Thanks for alerting us. Okay, any other items under other?
I do. Joe, your second email of the day about the fields, I'm, I'm wondering if there isn't a creative solution that we can come up with without killing the soccer field, but with, you know, not wasting the time for the lacrosse team to go over to Chancellor, and there's no other grass space on this campus that can be used for a lacrosse practice?
Right, we have, we have softball fields that, that, or spread other fields that are used during the fall, but obviously, there's no softball or baseball during the fall, so, you know, I'm going by, and I, I support the, you know, the recommendation of our athletic director, our, you know, and Sheldon, I mean, we think that, that the solution we've come up with now is, is, is a pretty creative solution without, without trashing the field in, in question. You know, if there were other fields close by, we'd use them, but nobody wants to have to walk to a different field, or to have to drive their kids to a soccer practice at the Baptist home or whatever.
Well, there is, there is a team that goes over there, I'm not worried about the soccer team, that's not a school sport.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not talking about our school teams, I'm talking about community teams.
Right, well, they certainly get the last dips on our fields if we need them.
Well, yeah, and, and our fields are available, and their, their use of, of the field that, that our lacrosse team is using for practice now over Chancellor, that's only been a soccer field for, for three years. I mean, I had, I had two kids go through that program, and never once did they practice a Chancellor, it was always practicing someplace else around the community, and it's definitely convenient, but we don't have the opportunity to, to extend that convenience now, we have our own teams, our own facilities that we need to, that we need to make sure are playable, that we can't go for a year or two to let our varsity field, you know, grow back in, and now we're using it two seasons a year, so, that's, that's a, that's a big increase in the wear and tear on that field. I mean, if somebody's got a great idea, talk to me after the meeting and let me know, but I mean, we've kind of been through this, this wasn't just a snap decision to do this, this is something we've been looking at for, ever since last year, when we started realizing that with, with two very high-impact sports on that field per year, there just wasn't enough time over the summer for it to recover.
Diane?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I just wanted to point out, there's several teams that practice other places than high school, I mean, other teams practice at Chancellor, Stone Church Field, I mean, there's other teams that have to either walk over there, or, you know, field hockey, softball, you know, it's not just this one team that's being, you know, asked to leave the main campus, so to speak, it's, you know, a lot of kids have to go other places, it's not, you know, it's not just this one sport.
That's a good point.
Diane?
Oh, and obviously, the ideal solution would be to have a nice, beautiful turf field out there. What is, what was, I mean, when you were originally looking at the class there, was there an estimate of what it would take?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to throw out a figure that's going to make the rounds, but I think when, I think Millbrook put in a, an artificial turf field just a couple of years ago, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of a million and a half to two million, and, and they put theirs in, thanks to a, a very sizable donation.
I'm not suggesting-
But that's, yeah. In terms of wear and tear on fields, when you don't have unlimited space, and we're, you know, we're essentially a, you know, a landlocked campus here, artificial turf is, is not going to wear out like, like real grass will when it's, when it's taking that kind of pounding, and those, you know, those sports are rough on the turf, it's just the nature of the sport. So, in, in lieu of that, we've got to just rotate our fields, and unfortunately, I guess we've got to, we've got to make sure we take care of our, our sports first, and, and I, with all due respect, I think the progress we've made with our lacrosse program, I'm not happy when I hear people talk as if we're giving lacrosse short shrift, and I think we've, we've done an awful lot, and, and the participation is great, and we have, I, I think we have more kids playing lacrosse this spring than, than in any other sport, so, the interest is there, and we're doing a lot for it, we're just, we're just in a grass crunch now, fortunately. But if anybody has any other great ideas that we're missing, let me know, I'd love to hear them, but we, we think we've got the best possible situation right now.
Well, I think, I just want to say, I appreciate the effort that Sheldon and Steve make to, to manage the space and the variety of teams that we have, it's not easy, because you also have, you know, you have JV and Modified on different levels, as Diane pointed out, a lot of the teams have to be flexible, and, you know, that's just, that's okay, because really, we need to do, need to maintain the integrity of the spaces that we spent an awful lot of money to build and create for the, for the kids, so, it's certainly sensible to, to use them wisely, and I appreciate the, the efforts that they're making to do that.
Yeah, one other comment that I would make before we move off this, somebody said to me the other day, "Well, if, if we just put more money in our budget to take care of those fields, we wouldn't have this problem," and I, I say, "Hold it, it's got nothing to do with that, A, we've got a great grounds crew, and we're doing everything that we can other than have a dome over it and grow grass during the winter," so, it, it isn't a case of we're, we're giving it short shrift financially in terms of taking care of what we have, we're taking care of what we- We're taking care of what we have very well. It's, there's no turf field that's going to take that kind of abuse.
Right, sure.
And I'm using abuse in a bad way. I mean, it's a rough, they're both rough sports, and they take their toll. So, hey, somebody in the community talks to you about, "Well, if you put another $50,000 in the budget for maintenance, we have better fields." Well, I would counter that we wouldn't. We're doing a very good job with our fields, and we're taking care of them well, but we're using them, and that's what they're there for.
All right, well, thank you for addressing that issue. Any other items under other? All right, I mean, move on to our action items. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Then, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent items?
Salute.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to cast one vote for Thomas Hurley as a candidate in the annual election of members of the Dutchess County Board of Cooperative Education Services?
Salute.
By Mark. Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to cast one vote for Michael Reel as a candidate in the annual election of members of the Dutchess County Board of Cooperative Education Services?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments?
Question, one of the emails you had sent around, you were not sure about the second question.
Well, I know Thomas Hurley and his work on the, he's been a member of the Millbrook Board of Education for a long time. I'm not as familiar with either gentleman, but my research suggests that I think Michael Reel is the candidate we should vote for. I think that it's certainly come to light, and this is not the first year this has happened, that there are concerns that districts have around leadership at Bosse's. I've said this before, and I think as a board, we need to follow up on it a little bit earlier in the process, that if local component districts have an issue with Bosse's, we need to express it in ways throughout the year, rather than just like as a vote all of a sudden. You know, it's not really good to make a statement without making an actual statement. So, I'm comfortable with this vote right now. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the, to adopt a resolution to direct the district clerk to cast one vote to approve the Dutchess County Bosse's administrative budget in the amount of $4,233,350 for the 2014-15 school year?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to extend the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Rhinebeck regarding facilities used through August 31st, 2015?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint the following individuals, whose names were provided by the Dutchess County Board of Elections and the capacities and the pay rates so noted, for their employment with respect to the conduct of the budget vote and board election on May 20th, 2014, in accordance with the requirements and guidelines of the Dutchess County Board of Elections. The election inspectors trained on use of optical-scanned voting machines, Jill McKibben $150, and Linda McAtier $150, the voting machine technician, Mark Doctoroff $150.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 2013-14 school year?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the Rhinebeck crew team overnight trip to the New York State Scholastic Rowing Association Championships in Saratoga, New York on May 9th through 11th, 2014, at no additional unbudgeted cost to the school district?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Jean Florio to score the 2013-14 grade four New York State science assessments?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Kathleen Smith to the position of teacher aide assigned to the Bulkeley Middle School effective April 22nd, 2014, through June 19th, 2014, at 6.5 hours per day at a salary of Step 1, $20,031 prorated, in accordance with the ante-salaried schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to clarify the age and age of date for the purpose of retirement of Vincent Nugent, Lee Morel, Linda Sutherland, Susan Dumas, Liz Erwin, and Margaret Disco, as stated by each and as already accepted by the Board of Education, to be effective the close of business on June 30th, 2014?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept grant awards from the Rhinebeck PTSO in the total amount of $1,133.38, as stipulated?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? Just thank you to the PTSO again, and to the teachers who take advantage of their grants, so thank you. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the employment history of a particular person?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous, we're moving into executive session. Thank you.